Well, good afternoon, everybody. We'll go ahead and reconvene into the open session. First of all, before we do our Pledge of Allegiance, let's go take the row. Clerk, please.
Supervisor Abicoga. Is absent Supervisor Young is here. Supervisor Ellenberg.
I'm here.
Vice President Arenas is here. And President Lee.
President as well. Everybody's here. Yes, perfect. All right, I'll go ahead and actually, in this case, I will go ahead and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise if you can?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, moving on, we are doing the recommendations relating to certificates of appreciation, commendations, and proclamations. First, do I have a motion to my college? Motion by Vice President Arenas to have second? Motion seconded. All right.
Supervisor Abicoga?
Aye.
Supervisor Young?
Yes.
Supervisor Ellenberg?
Yes.
Vice President Ellenberg? I'm sorry, Vice President Arenas?
Yes.
And President Lee.
I as well.
Thank you, your motion carries.
All right, good. So, in that case, we are now moving to item eight. We'll start with item eight A with our Vice President Arenas first, presenting a commendation for Judge Erica Yu as she retires after 24 years of amazing service to Santa Clara County.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the bittersweet honor of celebrating our Judge Erica Yu, who's been just a trailblazer and a leader. Today, we mark the culmination of her extraordinary 24 years of distinguished service. She's still going to continue to serve until the end of the year, but I call her lovingly Jerica because she asked me to call her by her first name, and I could never do that to a judge. There you are. Because you've earned your stripes, and you've earned that J, and so you're programmed in my phone and in my heart as Jerica. I would love for you to come up and join me at the podium because we will be speaking all about you today. Please, please give her a warm round of applause. When I see Judge Yu, seriously, there's an aura about you, and I just want to hug you. And I, like I said, it's a privilege, but also a very bittersweet celebration. So, I met you, Judge Yu, and I think there's going to be a picture of you and Andres, you holding Andres. But I was pregnant with Andres, and even before I was pregnant with Andres, who's my first kiddo, and he's 17 now. And we were in dependency, we were in Family Wellness Court, and so for those of you who may not know, it's a specialty court that first five helped fund, and Judge Yu gave life. And I know that there's times where people come in for a special project, and I don't know who said this, but there's two days that are really important in the person's life, and that's the day that you're born and the day that you realize why, right? And I know that there's so many reasons why the world needed you, but in that moment, I know that the world needed you for family wellness because you brought folks together in a way that created compassion and love and understanding for all the families, for all our children, and those children who were also previous children in our child welfare system, who were now parents and going through and repeating a cycle that I know that you wanted to interrupt to give them a different opportunity and a different track. And that's how we met. This is how we met. And so when we reconnected in a very different way, I was, now I'd already been a school board member, a council member, and then I asked you to please administer my oath of office for my county supervisor. I couldn't think of anybody more important, more suited, well-suited to talk about, to lead the oath, but also to lead me in this conversation about systems, especially including our child welfare system. And so Jerica led my oath of office, but this is, let me tell you, this is like bottom of her accomplishments. I will tell you all about her accomplishments because she is actually known for very innovative approaches, including, and I'll just go back to the family wellness. In family wellness, in this specialty court that Judge Yu led, she led with love. There was a lot of love in that courtroom, and, you know, that contribution, I think, changed really the way that I think other folks within our court system were allowed to behave, if you will. And I think it's so wonderful when we put love at the center, and Mother Teresa says it's not how much we give, but how much love we put into giving, and I have to say that you would definitely win some kind of prize, if I could put a prize on love, you would receive that. But let me talk about some of the real accomplishments of our judge, aside from Family Wellness Court that I hold so dear. Judge Yu became the first Asian-American female judge in this county in 2001, and so it was a very historical milestone that opened doors for greater diversity and representation in the judiciary system, and so that was huge. And over the course of her career, she presided over thousands of cases, earning respect for her fairness, integrity, compassion, her love. Her rulings reflected not only a mastery of the law, but also deep understanding of the human impact in judicial decisions. And every ruling she saw was not just the law, but the lives behind it. Her compassion turned justice into healing, and I am so lucky to have been able to witness that firsthand in the reunifications that we saw during Family Wellness Court, as well as during family reunification as a county supervisor, which celebrates the families that have overcome obstacles and challenges with substance abuse and mental health and intimate part of violence, and so many issues that are just part of, part and parcel of many of our families in this county, and so we celebrate Reunification Day. And, you know, I've got to say that I wish I could ask you not to retire because all of what you've done to reform our judicial system, especially in the juvenile justice system, is immeasurable. You've championed restorative practices that emphasize rehabilitation, accountability, and second chances, and those are the kinds of opportunities and tracks that we really need for our children, our youth, and our families, ones that allow for our families to rise to the occasion. She served not only as a mentor to me, although she didn't know this, but to countless attorneys, and I know that later we'll hear from Supervisor Young. She also mentored law clerks, fellow judges. I think anybody who had any contact with Jerica has been inspired by you, I'm going to say, and I'm going to, yes, I'm going to confirm that, not only just the women, but just all those folks who are underrepresented communities and want to pursue law and public service. I think that you are the North Star in terms of how we should behave and interact and serve as public servants. Now, I've got to say that you have numerous committees and roles in lots of organizations, so the Judicial Council of California, the California Commission on Judicial Performance, the National Asian-Pacific American Bar Association, Judicial Council, the California Asian-Pacific American Judges Association, and just so much more. In terms of being a strong advocate, there is no greater voice in our community that does what you do. Just this morning, you were sharing what Lisa, I was following up on an email because she wanted to make sure, Jerica wanted to make sure that I know some of the issues that impact the system, and I know that you're trying to wrap up a lot of work, but here's the thing, I think we're going to continually need you to come back and tell us how to get it right for all of our children and youth and our families. Your work has been so important and based on equity, inclusion, like I said, and compassion, and Your work has been so important and based on equity, inclusion, like I said, and compassion in the justice system. And you've been teaching us really that healing is the highest form of justice. And in your leadership, you've shaped policies that strengthen trust between the courts and the community. And that legacy is going to continue on for a really long time. That is of integrity and service. Judge Yu, you presided over cases that really, you presided over hope and given children and families a chance to rewrite their stories. And you reminded us that the courtroom can be a place of restoration, where our most vulnerable families find the courage and determination to overcome incredible challenges and to build loving homes. You are about service, humility, and vision. And because of you, I know that there's so many families and so many of our youth that have a second chance. You have the greatest empathy and love that I have seen from a person. And so your retirement is not only simply closing this chapter, but passing of the torch because you have instilled in many of us who have admired you from afar and from close, that your example will continue to guide not only us, but the systems that we work within, whether it's our courts, our child welfare systems, our county systems. Your retirement doesn't mark the end of an era, but really the legacy that you continue to leave and lead within all of us. And so with that, I thank you for your unwavering dedication. And I'm trying really hard not to look at you so I do not cry. Because you, you have one of the strongest faith and, and sources of love for public service. And there's not very many folks that I can say that are true public servants in the way that you have shown us in your courtroom, outside of your courtroom, in your personal life. I am absolutely grateful to have met you. And, and even though we are, I never asked you to be my mentor. You never accepted. I have taken you as, as really my North Star in terms of how I serve my community and to make sure that I'm always centered around love and compassion and justice. And so for that, thank you so much. And I use that as, as an excuse to not continue to cry in front of all of you, but I would love to have Supervisor Jung come down and also share some words because I know that you had a very close relationship with who I refer to as Jerica and you will refer to her as, as you see fit. So welcome.
Thank you, Vice President. Hi, everyone. Judge, I, I met you in 2001 in a community college classroom at Deansah, but I saw you first on TV. In 2001, Judge became the first Asian-American woman to be appointed to the bench here in Santa Clara County with a very large AAPI demographic, but she was the first. It took way too long to have a first, but I'm so grateful that you are the first. And then that summer I met you, you came to our summer class to speak. And I'm going to share with the crowd today, the story that you told. So it's been 25 years in the making. So Judge introduces herself and this is a summer institute. This is a summer, this is extra learning, right? Us, a bunch of Eastside kids drove across town to get to Deansah to spend the summer with a leadership institute rooted in equity, social justice, and ethnic studies. And so Judge was our guest speaker and she said, "The best thing I love about being a judge is that I get to make grown men cry." All right, all right. It's all right, dudes. I've got this point to the story. Okay. It's all good tears, it's all good tears. And so that was exactly the reaction we had in the classroom. And she explained that when she was, her, her first day on the bench, she was in traffic court. And this gentleman came to the, up to the, the bench, the bar. And, and he, what he had against him, stacked against him, was just years and years and years of unpaid traffic violations. Years of fines that have compounded and interest doubled and fines, tripled and fines, kept on growing. And he told Judge, "Judge, I don't have the ability to pay. This has taken over my life. My driver's license has been taken away. I've lost my job. I'm not able to care for my family. This has broken my back." That's what he said to Judge. And Judge said, "Your fines and your charges are dismissed." Then the next man came up. Yes. Then the next defendant came up and Judge asked them, "Do you have the ability to pay and resolve and settle your fines and fees today?" He said the exact same thing. "Judge, this has broken my back. These fines and fees have compounded and interest doubled, quadrupled, and I have lost my driver license. I've, I've lost the ability to earn for myself and to pay these fines. It's breaking my back. It has completely devastated my life." And Judge said, "Case dismissed." And then the next person came up and said the same thing. Judge shared in this retelling of the story of her first day at court, the bailiff is shaking his head in the courtroom. The clerk is like, "Oh, this new judge. I don't know." Right? And then a few minutes later, the bailiff came back to Judge and says, "Judge, the men that you, whose cases you dismiss are holding on to each other crying in the parking lot." And Judge, when you told us that story, we simultaneously, as students in that classroom, saw ourselves as someone whose back has been broken at some point in life, who had been overburned by compounded interest, compounded grief, without a way out. But simultaneously saw ourselves as people who may someday have the opportunity, the power to relieve that burden for someone else. 25 years later, I keep that story in my heart because, hey, I grew, I grew up to be someone alongside a malicious boy with the power to relieve the burden that might be breaking someone's back. And that is the leadership of Judge, the impact of Judge Yu. And I had the great privilege to stalk you after that summer. I emailed you and solicited, "Hi Judge, I'm that girl that met you in class. Just wanted to tell you how I'm doing. I'm going to apply for, I'm going to apply for law school. Hey Judge, guess what? I got into law school. Hey Judge, guess what? I need an internship." And lo and behold, you offered me my first summer clerkship with Family Wellness Court. And that was my first exposure to a courtroom. Oftentimes, you have law students going to law school because their dad was a judge, their mom was a lawyer. That was something that ran their families. Then you've got a bunch of kids who fight their way into law school because you want to be part of the system that has contained you for so long, that ruled your world and the lives of those you care about. So getting to be in Judge's Family Wellness courtroom, seeing compassion demonstrated in real time. Yes, the bailiff shook his head. Yes, the court clerk says, "Oh, this judge and this clerk got a soft heart." But we actually saw profound changes. People came back and reunited with their children. People came back from their treatment. People survived the weekends when we thought they weren't going to. And they lived by the values that was being supported in that courtroom. And so Judge, thank you. I, I, there's not enough words in this world to explain the impact that you've had. But I can share with you the, the interns that Judge has had over the year. You have a supervisor. You also have currently the first AAPI woman to be the chief counsel for NASA. You, her, her next intern just got appointed to the bench. A young Korean-American woman is now presiding in a courtroom of her own. And then another intern, former intern of yours, spent years in Vietnam freeing refugees that were held stateless in the Philippines behind barbed wire and camps for more than five decades. There's no coincidence that these are the women that gravitate towards you, Judge. And there's no coincidence of what we believe is our true potential, living every day to our full authentic selves, following your lead. So Judge taught me a lot of things. She taught me that there is a potential to positively make grown men cry. She taught me to not scurry, enunciate, and speak from the dire frame. Make yourself very clear. She taught me that three words is enough. Don't use five. And she taught me to always trust my voice, to never hide myself, never dim my shine, and to speak truth to power through lived experience. On behalf of myself, if not for myself, on behalf of others who don't have the same platform or the voice that I do. Thank you, Judge. Thank you just for teaching me.
Yes, everybody come down and we'll go take a picture. I just want to say a couple of words real quick. I have known Judge Erica Yu for decades and I like that Jerica, that's great because I've always went to her, gone to her and she was like, "Just call me Erica," all the time. That's always, that's the response I get from her. And, and she is so underassuming, having even, I am going to go through the resumes, but having served as president of the California Judges Association, that's over 1,000 judges in California saying that she is our lead. So these are huge work and I'm not going to it. It's all in the proclamation. But I just want to say thank you so much, Jerica, as my friend, as my mentor in so many years. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you. Let's go get the picture.
You're all claiming Judge Yu. And I did leap up to the microphone because I must make just two of my, my own comments as well, Judge. Also, never going to call you Erica. But I met you, of course, through my husband. And while the civil court litigants may not have engendered as much sympathy as in your other departments, he described you for years before I met you as the most ethical, compassionate person on the bench he had ever met. And every time he appeared in front of you, he wanted to be his best and he wanted to impress you. And what he has, has said is that even now when he is not in front of you, when he thinks about you, his whole game elevates a little bit. So I wanted to thank you on Steve's behalf. For that. And also, is Tom here?
No, he's at work.
So I also, also before I met Judge Yu, I happened to have purchased her husband's absolutely gorgeous book called Living on, on a Dollar a Day. It's photos of, of the poor from around the world. And because they don't have the same last name, I had no reason to make the connection until when we did meet, I saw the book in your office. And it just speaks not only to your character, but to the people with whom you surround yourself. And your partner clearly has the same worldview, the same deep integrity and compassion for those who need the most from us. And I'm just so honored to know you, thrilled that you also installed me as well as, or swore me in as well as Sylvia. And I know we have other things to do today, but thank you for indulging me.
Oh, this way.
Yes, this way, yes.
First of all, thank you all so much. And congratulations to Erin O'Brien of Community Solutions and all of the other people who are getting commendations. I want to correct the record just a little bit in that one of the gentlemen who, he had been paying his fine for years and then he stopped paying and then he got more interest and he had put his kids through San Jose State and was a janitor there. And what happened was after those two gentlemen got their fines and fees deleted, the deputy heard something outside and ran out. And then he came back and he came to the bench and he said, "Judge, you know those two guys? They're out there brawling." And I said, "They're brawling? Why?" And he's like, "No, they're bawling." And one is saying, "God bless the judge. God bless the judge." But I just want to share that I am a native of Santa Clara County of San Jose. I want to thank Supervisor Arenas, Abicoga, Jung, Ellenberg, and Lee, as well as Mr. Williams and his whole team of leadership. I feel so blessed to live in this county. And I've said multiple times on the record that I gladly pay my property taxes because they go to all these important things. But the last thing I wanted to say is when we started Family Wellness Court with Supervisor Arenas and Supervisor Jung, we received in our county a $6.3 million grant. Half of it was from the federal government, from SAMSA. Half of it was from First Five. SAMSA no longer exists and it was just killed this year by the federal government. We are not necessarily going to be able to receive those funds and to serve our community in the same way. But yesterday, through Steve Preminger and his group, we got 4,800 stuffed animals. For 14, for 14 years, law students at Santa Clara University have every Christmas done a drive for toys and things for infants and books. There's so much love in this community that doesn't come through money, but through support. And I tell the litigants in court, "The love of our community is here to support you. That's going to be needed more." After I retire, my husband and I are going to start a fund so every month we'll have $2,000 available for litigants in court to have things that we've bought, which are feeding chairs, diapers, reading glasses, baby formula. Because, I mean, twice I've had two guys who were homeless, really old. We gave them reading glasses that I got at the dollar store in court and they cried and said, "Judge, it's the first time that I could ever read my minute order" because they're such tiny writing. So I'm not allowed to fundraise, but I'm allowed to say that all of us, you are all people who are being accommodated or receiving commendations because you're amazing human beings. Your network can continue to serve all the people in need in this community, even though SAMSA doesn't exist and so those things aren't necessarily there for us at this time. And I would say that one of my favorite quotes is from David Hawkins, who said, "Love is misunderstood to be an emotion. It is actually a way of being in the world, a way of seeing yourself in others." And Cornel West said, "Never forget that love is what justice looks like in public." So thank you all and thank you.
Okay, so due to some scheduling conflict, I'm trying to move this around. We're going to do the next commendation for the Mountain View Fire Chief, which is item G, Juan F. Diaz. Next by Supervisor Abicoga for her retirement after 40 years of service.
Thank you, President Lee, and good afternoon, everyone. I also just want to offer my congratulations to Erica Yu, who's been a real mentor for me. I met her when I was in my younger twenties and she was already a powerhouse then and as the first Asian-American woman to serve on the judicial bench here. She's just been such a trailblazer and a mentor to me as well. So congratulations, Erica, and thank you so much for, for all of your leadership. I'm honored, it's a bittersweet day because there's so many friends that we are honoring today for their retirements. And the other one being, oh, I'm sorry. The other one being my fire chief from Mountain View, Chief Juan Diaz. And we had to move the schedule around because he has to go back to Mountain View and escort Santa to the tree lighting ceremony by 4:45. So we're going to try to get this done before then. But I've had the honor of knowing Chief Juan, I call him Chief Juan, for over 10 years now when he joined the Mountain View Fire Department. But for over 40 years, Chief Diaz has been a firefighter who's rushed into danger, saved lives, protected homes, and guided his crews through moments when every second mattered. And I, if you know me, you know that I have the highest regard and respect and love for our, our public safety personnel, our firefighters. And so I'm really honored to be able to, to recognize Chief Diaz. So I want, I would like for all of you to join me in thanking him for his lifetime of service and wish him well in his new chapter in retirement. A little bit about his history. Chief Diaz's career as a firefighter began at just 19 years old. He was a young refugee from Cuba who knocked on the door of a Santa Clara fire station, station, offering to volunteer. And there's actually a KQED documentary on his story and his family escaping Cuba and coming to the United States. So please Google it and look it up on YouTube. By day, he studied fire science at Mission College and by night, And by night, he balanced a job working alongside his father as a janitor. That relentless drive would propel him through four decades of service protecting families and futures. In 1989, he joined the San Jose Fire Department. And I know his heart is split between San Jose and Mountain View, but that's okay. And he spent 25 years rising through the ranks from firefighter to deputy fire chief. Along the way, he delivered babies, saved homes, and mentored countless firefighters. His career was more about more than just fighting fires. However, it was about saving lives and guiding the new generation of firefighters. In 2014, he joined Mountain View Fire Department as Deputy Chief of Operations. And within a year, he became the city's 19th Fire Chief. Under his leadership, Mountain View earned three consecutive Class I ISO ratings. For those of you who may not know what ISO ratings are, that's the Insurance Services Office evaluating fire protection across the nation. And a Class I rating is the highest score possible. Out of thousands of fire agencies nationwide, only 487 have achieved this distinction. And Mountain View is one of just 46 in California. In fact, Mountain View, the Mountain View Fire Department is the only department in our entire county to receive this rating. This rating not only reflects world-class fire protection, but it also means lower insurance premiums for our residents and businesses, another benefit of Chief Diaz's leadership. Chief Diaz also established the Mountain View Fire Department California Joint Apprenticeship Program to recruit and train the next generation of firefighters. Just as importantly, he championed diversity and inclusion, promoting leaders who reflect the community in Mountain View. When I started, and to this day, there's been such a change. It really, our department now really reflects our diversity in our beautiful city. Chief Diaz took pride in promoting the organization's first female battalion chief, first female fire marshal, and first Chinese-American battalion chief who's here with us today. For over more than a decade, Chief Diaz has built a fire department that doesn't just respond to crises, it anticipates them, and equips neighbors with the knowledge and tools to be prepared for fires. Beyond those accolades, I must add how much it's meant to me when Chief Diaz has taken me under his wing during both of my terms on the Mountain View City Council to teach me so much about the fire service. And really, frankly, I thank my department, all of everyone who's included me in their fire family. He's taught me about fire service and the true meaning of public service, lessons I still carry with me to this day. And so with that, thank you, Chief Juan, for protecting our community, but more importantly, for really your care and your love for our community. We cheer your retirement, although I have to say, I'm quite sad to see you. I know you won't be far, but I am sad to see you moving on. But I want to celebrate this time with you now and I wish you all the best in your next chapter and next adventures with your family. And I'm sure, I know you're going to be doing other great things. So congratulations, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you Supervisor Margaret Abecoga and Santa Clara County Supervisors and County Executive, Mr. James Williams. It has been a pleasure as an immigrant and a refugee serving the Santa Clara County community. I came here in 1980, and it was a privilege joining the Santa Clara Fire Department, later the San Jose Fire Department, ultimately ending in the city of Mountain View, and serving the greater Santa Clara Valley community. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I'm very distracted.
Hang in there, folks, lots of reasons to celebrate today. Lots of reasons to celebrate, lots of people to celebrate.
Okay, all right. So next items, item actually, aid... B first.
B first.
Yes. Sorry. Sorry. Next one, this commendation for Sally Armandaris for being a trailblazing advocate. And this is nominated by Supervisor Arenas. Yes, come on in.
I heard that. Whatever Sally says, goes. I think that's true. Sally, come up here with me. So, good afternoon, I'm back. Come on up, come on up. And bring whoever, bring your community, your... Yes, whoever you want. We've never limited it before. So it is, it's my wonderful honor to, and it is a wonderful honor to also recognize another trailblazing advocate to the right of me, Sally. Since she's bringing her entourage, I need to make sure I point you out so that everybody knows that it's you that we're celebrating today, Sally Armandaris. Agustina Sally Armandaris. And yes, we will do whatever you tell us to, Sally. It isn't, very often, we just finish talking about, you know, I think it's women who are sometimes left or work towards being the leaders in our community because, you know, the universe knows, first of all, knows who to hand a good fight to and understands that we can make sure that our battles are won. And Sally is a warrior. And I could say una adelita, right? In the times of revolution in Mexico, adelitas were those who, women who accompanied the wartime efforts. And so it is my privilege to say that I know you, that I recognize your strength and respect the work that you have done. Typically, when I talk about the folks who have laid ground for us, I have to always make sure that I tip my hat in humility because there's a lot of adelitas, there's a lot of Sallies who have come before us. But Sally, you have, you have won your place in our community, your place in this battle. And you have fought many, many, many battles. And so my heart and my admiration is to you. But I'm going to tell folks a little bit about who you are just so that they can get to know you a little bit more. Sally was born and raised in Gilroy, and she's always had an opportunity and a time to dedicate to ensure that our communities in the south part of the county, I would say, are South County queen. No disrespect to Rebecca, in back of her, her daughter. You really brought the fight around equal, equal say for all of us. You were born into a Mexican-American family that worked in the California fields. And you embodied that strength of hard work, of what your family has taught you, into advocacy. You bring that to life, and you still continue to do that along with your family. There is no greater investment than when you know that your children have carried on your legacy. And I've seen that happen through your children. And so I know that the family is really important. And your activism that spans over more than 60 years is evident not only in you, but in the children that you've had and what they, the part that they, and the role that they play in our community today. So let me tell you a little bit about that social justice and civil rights, the worker protections that Sally has fought for. She's organized voters and community members from a very young age. And you played a really instrumental role civically and engaged in our youth in Gilroy to participate in the efforts of the United Farm Workers in Santa Clara County. But I know that your fight starts from a very earlier time. And I won't steal your thunder, and I won't share that so that you could share your own testimony in terms of that. But what I will say is that you've been really instrumental in bringing just a plethora of services for underserved communities within South County. And South County has something that a lot of other aspects of our county do not have, and that's resources. But, you know, when you tell Latino, "We don't have..." You're always, when you, you can feed one, you can feed two, you can feed three. And you have fed us for a really long time with your efforts and with the work that you have had. Your background as a farmworker family, you've had to fight for the rights of fair treatment of those workers. And that's a, that's a very hard fight. Because that fight started many, many moons ago, and we currently continue to have it. The fight to have better working conditions for agricultural workers. And this is along with Jim McKenty and Father Ronald Burke. You also ensured that the children of farmworkers had access to daycare services in Morgan Hill and in South County as those parents continued to work in the fields. I know that that struggle of parents working in fields, as you know, my dad was also a bracero, which means he worked in the fields under a work program. And so did my mother at one point. And I think the work in the fields creates the kind of character and the kind of work ethic that you're going to carry out in your community. And I can see, I can see it now, that the sun has given you the kind of energy and love and divinity to continue to carry out the work with caras. And caras means faces in Spanish. But caras could also be caridad, and caridad is charity, and it's being benevolent to those who have less than you do. I admire what you have done for our community over the years, the development of the leadership, the advocacy, the cultural awareness. You're always bringing that to the forefront. You don't allow us to forget. And what I, what I'm not going to talk about is that very crucial battle that you had at one point earlier in your life. Because I want you to, you own that battle, and I would love for you to share that story with us. But just know that there's people like me who are brown people and those who align with a lot of our brown community that have to thank those who have stood before us in the face of challenges, the face of when people tell you no or this can't be done, or we're not deserving of the services because of the poverty, because of the location, because of so many different reasons. You stand up for our families in a way that I really admire. That I wish one day I will be able to have the kind of strength, the kind of legacy in my own children as you have done with your own. And that for so many other reasons, I want to just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you have done. Our women, sometimes in our Latino communities, especially in our Mexican-American communities, we are, we are created, we're developed to serve. And we serve with humility. And sometimes that shapes us within a certain gender role. And you've broken those gender roles, and you've broken those restrictions that we once have had. And I'm really proud to call you a mentor, to call you somebody that I look up to and that I admire. And I thank you for the legal battles that you have had to involve yourself in to make sure that we, the rest of us, can have rights in the way that you saw was fair and just. But I'll, I won't talk more about that because I want you to share that story and share that battle with all of us. Everyone, Sally Armandaris.
Thank you, Sylvia. First of all, I think my battles are, when I learned about life was in kindergarten, I was four and a half years old. My name is Agustina. But when I started kindergarten, the teacher said, "No, your name is Sally because Agustina is too Mexican." And so they would spank me every day and say, "You know, a troubled child doesn't answer when we call her." And we'd call her Sally, but I'd go home and as I was Agustina. So I can honestly say that's when I learned that, you know, we have to fight for justice. And I, you may not be able to tell, but I am in my 80s. And there's where I've been through a lot of battles. I tell everybody I'm 38 because I'm dyslexic, so I just... What I did want to say is that as a Gilroy native, I grew up working in the fields of Gilroy. You know, I got to do the garlic, the prunes, the cucumbers, everything that, the fields, because that's what, you know, our family's did. And I worked all my life, and this is the only story I want to tell, and that is that I worked all my life and I paid taxes just like everybody else that worked in California. And this went on for years. But when I was involved in an auto accident, and due to the accident, I lost a child. So I had to go on state disability because I couldn't work. And when I applied for disability, they turned me down. They said, "No, women cannot receive disability in California, not based on pregnancy." And I thought that was discrimination against women because only women can bear children. So I told them, "You don't pay me my disability. At the hearing, I'm going to sue you for discrimination." Again, women, because, you know, like I said, only women could bear children. And sure enough, I sued them, and I want in California so women could get disability. However... However, our lovely Governor Reagan at the time appealed it to the Supreme Court in Washington. So we went to Washington, and we won, you know? The Supreme Court agreed with me that it was discrimination against women. And so we won the case, and that's why women today get disability in California. The truth is that we should not forget that today there's still a lot of discrimination based on sex, in wages, promotions, the way people treat women. And we have got to make a change. So I appeal to all the women that are here, young and old, not that I'm old, but people like me, to stand up and fight for equality. We are not all second, we as women are not second-class citizens. We are all equal. So please stand up and fight for your rights.
And Sally, I will have this corrected because we have, I've always known you as Sally, and I know it was Agustina. It was Agustina, but this is, this also clearly marks the history in our, in our country where Mexican-Americans are just never accepted, never good enough. And they can't beat the spirit or energy and the liveliness that you... and the liveliness that you have brought forward that only challenges us to rise to the occasion. And so thank you for rising for all of us mujeres to be able to be at par with the rest of the society, especially men. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we are going to item eight C, which is commendation from Supervisor Young and myself to start this, to commend the in-home supportive services caregivers for extraordinary selflessness, selflessness and dedication they demonstrate. And we'll let you get started first.
Thank you, thank you. Community colleagues, it is an honor to have members of SIU Local 2015 here with us today and to present a commendation to our in-home support, supportive service caregivers. Yeah, we could do better. Come on, these are the folks that take care of all. Yes. That's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about. SIU Local 2015 represents more than 450,000 long-term caregivers that deliver lifelines of care to residents across 38 counties. These are the individuals, the aunties, the uncles, the brothers, the sisters, the neighbors and friends who care for our most beloved so that they may age gracefully with dignity in their homes so that children receive the care from those who care and love them the most, who realize their most potential, to keeping our hospital beds and our skilled nursing facilities open and available to those in greater need. We are able to have our lives and continue our daily operations and live out all of our goals because of caregivers providing care for the very young to the very elderly. As you recognize the members of our community provide care for our most vulnerable neighbors, seniors and people with disabilities and children, we highlight that when we care for those who provide that care, we all thrive. The work of IHSS caregivers, many of whom are of color, immigrants, demand strenuous skill, patience and heart. Thank you for all your unwavering commitment to serving our most vulnerable neighbors, our most precious loved ones. I would like to invite now SIU Local 2015 Executive Board Member Tanya York to share a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Tanya York. I have been an IHSS provider for 26 years. I care for my youngest sister who is very, very sick. IHSS workers are the backbone of the healthcare system in the United States. We care for the sickest, weakest, most vulnerable members of our society. I want to thank you Supervisor Young for this recognition and for your all, and I'm sorry, and President of the Board as well, thank you for your unwavering support of IHSS workers. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I just want to add to what's been said is I think it's important for people to realize the number of folks who's doing this type of work. In our county, we actually have 38,000 IHSS caregivers supporting 36,000 of our most vulnerable residents. Many of them are low-income, blind, disabled and elderly. This work is not only compassion, it's really essential. You're providing the humane and dignified alternative to institutional care, helping people to maintain their independence, preserve their quality of life and remain connected to the communities. This work is really hard work. It requires empathy, patience, skill and resilience, demanding long hours with physical, emotional challenges, and you continue to keep showing up day after day with unwavering dedication and heart. So to our caregivers, we want to reaffirm our deep gratitude and support for each of you. Your impact is immeasurable and our community is stronger, safer and more compassionate because of your work. Thank you. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Everybody come down. Thank you. Next, we have a commendation for the Silicon Valley Leadership Community for advancing innovation, empowering leaders both globally and locally. At this time, I would like to invite to the dais the SVLC Chair Carolyn Bao, lead youth volunteer Leah Lee and the SVLC Leadership Team. Is she here? Come on up. I want to say, yeah, thank you for joining us today. The SVLC, the Silicon Valley Leadership Community, has emerged as one of the world's fastest-growing leadership communities dedicating to advancing high-growth technology, cutting-edge innovation and entrepreneurship. The mission is to help like-minded leaders grow and excel, empowering them to succeed while making meaningful contributions to their industries and communities. SVLC is comprised of a diverse group of tech executives, founders, scholars and investors, each bringing unique expertise that strengthens the entire community. Earlier this year, SVLC co-hosted the Society of Hearts of Light widely-attended AI Summit, Unleash Your Superpower with AI Right Here. This summit served as an essential platform for leaders to explore the transformative power of artificial intelligence, understanding how to upskill and lead in the digital era. Your impact has go beyond individual events. Through this long-term commitment to building leaders, engaging contributors worldwide and cultivating the next generation of innovators, SVLC continues to shape, inspire and change speakers right here in our county and across the globe. So without going through all the wheresses, I just want to say, go ahead, thank you and we recognize and commend SVLC for advancing these amazing work locally and globally. Congratulations. Do you want to say a few words? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Sure.
Do you have a few, you want to say a few words or no? Go ahead, please.
Awesome. Honored guests and our respected officers here and also Mr. Otter Lee, thank you all so much, first and foremost, for landing this wonderful place for us for our annual summit most recently. We were here and discussed something slightly different, as you may have thought about AI in general. People talk about how AI is going to affect people's jobs, what kind of new businesses can you create from AI? We delved specifically into something that's sort of a perennial soreness in almost every Asian leader's mind, which is leadership. Very ironic. So with this opportunity, I want to just take a small moment to give you all a small story about how SVLC has been founded. To this date, we have more than 700 business leaders. At the minimum, they're holding senior director jobs with all the known names in the Silicon Valley, Meta, ServiceNow, you name it. But then we all shared one small problem, which is we were the model minority and we were known to be not outspoken. We were, no, I intentionally use were because I do believe this is becoming increasingly a thing of the past. So six years ago, with some eager-minded friends, we kicked around this idea to say we got a lot to give, but many of our friends who are seeming to be living an enviable middle-class life feel unfulfilled. Why? We do not have equal opportunities in the corporate world, in the VC world, in even sometimes the academia worlds as Asian leaders because we were deemed as not very good at communication, we're deemed as not very able to advocate for ourselves. What can we do about this? So we did what the model minority would do. We looked inward. We thought, what if we just create more workshops and we help everybody to communicate better? What if we work together to get rid of our accents? Because many of us may have come to this country as first-generation immigrants. We worked on it. Then something more clear that came to us, it's not just about that. What we were lacking were three things distinctively. We needed more courage, we're equally good enough, and what we needed are opportunities that come from whom you are deeply connected with. This is not just about favoritism, it's about whom you know and they know your passion. And the third thing is we needed to be deeply weaved in with the communities that we're living in. So SVLC has been transforming not only the lives of our members, but also the mindset of our members with the help and support from our county supervisor like Otter Lee and many other business leaders and civic leaders. With that, I'm really grateful to invite my daughter on stage. Why? We have found by serving our community of Asian leaders, we're helping them to unlock more of their business potential, many of them, dozens of them, startups that have been bought, that have gone to recognition beyond hundreds of millions of valuation. But more importantly, all of the members who are in SVLC have found this true value from serving the community. And our second generation, as my daughter is standing here, are already putting their work into helping the leaders, helping our Asians to really unleash our full potential using AI, using any new technologies, whatever we have at our disposal. Ultimately, it's about people. It's about what we can do to upskill our leadership so that our communities are becoming better. So I'm really grateful to stand here to help, to receive this recognition on behalf of this energy behind SVLC. And I don't want to steal her thunder, I want to give her a couple of seconds to say a few words.
I just want to say that I'm really grateful to be able to use my skill, passion and eye for art in order to help a greater purpose, especially because that purpose is to help uplift other Asian-Americans like me.
Thank you. Thank you. Page this, wait, we'll get a picture, someone in. Today, we have a commendation for Erin O'Brien for advancing justice and equity, improving the health and wellbeing of Santa Clara County. We'd like to ask Erin O'Brien to please come and join us at the dais, coming up. Representative O'Brien, to present this commendation jointly with Supervisor Albi Koga, please come up. Well, Erin, we are so grateful to celebrate you today for your dedication and extraordinary leadership at the Community Solutions for the last and almost three decades, dating back to 1996. Erin began her journey as a social work intern, quickly stepping into leadership roles and becoming the president and CEO in 2003. In that role, she grew the organization from 60 staff members in '03 to over 400 in 2025, enhancing the lives of over 6,000 children and adults every year. As a leader, Erin refused to accept inadequate policies and partial approaches and guided major policy shifts on issues such as juvenile justice reform and survival of behavioral health providers during the COVID-19 pandemic, CalAin payment reform and so much more. And now I'd like to turn this over to Supervisor Albi Koga for comments.
Thank you, President Lee. It's an honor to help recognize Erin O'Brien, who's been such a devoted champion for behavioral health, working at the Community Solutions for the past nearly 30 years, as mentioned. Important to our work at the county, Erin served the broader behavioral health and nonprofit community through advocacy on the Behavioral Health Contractor Association Board and the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits Policy Council. And our community is stronger because of all of her amazing leadership and work. Most noticeably, and I've only had a chance to know Erin for a very short time, but in that time, I've been really struck by her empathy, kindness and devotion to improving the lives of Santa Clara County and San Bernardino County's most vulnerable community members. And just really also grateful for her leadership. She's always watching our meetings, she's been kind to text us about, you know, how we're doing and whatnot. She just really, really cares with all her heart and so we're just really fortunate to have had Erin here. Her legacy of advancing justice and equity for our most vulnerable residents will be felt for years to come. So thank you so much, Erin, for your many, many years of service and leadership to our community. Congratulations.
President Lee, President Lee, I'm sorry, from back here, I know, from the peanut gallery, back here. I just want to also thank and honor Erin for the work that you've been doing. You are a South County resident that has a level of legacy in the southern part of this district that is not comparable to others. And so when you actually informed me that you were going to retire, I just don't know who's, you know, you've got some shoes and people are going to have to fill them because you have been such an advocate for those folks who are under-resourced, underserved, which is the case for South County overall. And I know that the world is gaining you as part of just a regular resident, but we're losing a great leader, a gender-based advocate, I mean, a huge warrior for our district. And so I wish you well in your retirement, but you will be missed, you will be missed. Thank you for your service.
Why don't you go say a few words there? Sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to take an opportunity, echo something that Judge Yu said. It has been It has been, and I have said in my head way more times than I've said out loud, but I have said out loud so many times how grateful I am to be in Santa Clara County. Because I think the quality of the leadership, the quality of the nonprofit leaders, the community, is just second to none. And, you know, I feel a little funny. I sort of feel like I'm seeding the field at really a tough time right now, so I feel badly about that. But I have more faith in our collective community to be able to handle the challenges that are coming. But just, it has been such a gift to work with the folks that I have within the agency, who are family, and the colleagues at the sister agencies, who are family, and all of the folks at the county who provided such incredible leadership. It has just been a joy and a privilege to work with you and to fight alongside of you and to work for justice to protect our most vulnerable residents. So I just thank you all, Erin.
Erin, thank you for your leadership and thank you for your patience. I just had to also say something, just thank you from the bottom of my heart. Your fierce advocacy on behalf of survivors and those who are still in violent situations that they're trying to find their way out of is unparalleled and unmatched. And because of Erin's advocacy and that of her colleagues, you increased, you are able to increase the funding that the investments that this county makes into domestic violence and intimate partner violence by 400% in one fiscal year. 400%. And the county. And the county. Yes. I'm never going to forget that transformational leadership and also your transformational mentorship, taking people under your wing, guiding others to learn and to be able to walk with empathy for survivors and to teach this county what it really means to be an ally to this work. So Erin, I know that you're retiring, but you also gave me your cell phone number and so I can call you. So I'm going to call you. Thank you.
And next, we have a commendation for Dr. George Kent, as he retires after 36 years of service, faithful service to Santa Clara County Pace Clinic.
Come on up, Dr. Kent. I know it's a long afternoon, but I really hope you're all getting some joy from all of the folks that we have to celebrate through our community. And now it's my turn to celebrate Dr. George Kent. It really, it really is an honor to stand with you this afternoon and recognize the remarkable career and certainly well-earned retirement for Dr. George Kent. For 36 years, Dr. Kent has faithfully served our community at the Santa Clara County Pace Clinic and has embodied exactly what it means to be part of the county healthcare family, to meet others with compassion and to always look for ways to uplift those around you. Dr. Kent played a central role in helping to build the Partners in AIDS Care and Education Clinic, Pace Clinic, in 1989 at the height of the HIV/AIDS crisis. In the clinic's earliest days, often operating out of cramped rooms and even a temporary trailer, Dr. Kent and his colleagues formed a close-knit medical community. In those early years, Dr. Kent did far more than practice medicine. He walked with patients through the most difficult periods of their lives. He offered care when cures did not yet exist. He brought dignity to spaces shaped by grief. And he never turned away from those who were ignored, isolated, or stigmatized. Then, as medical breakthroughs transformed HIV from a fatal diagnosis to a manageable condition, Dr. Kent stood beside his patients once again, this time as they reclaimed their health and their lives. Beyond the Pace Clinic walls, Dr. Kent also practiced family medicine at Stanford Healthcare while simultaneously working at Pace. He has been a tireless advocate for equity in healthcare, pushing to integrate HIV treatment into primary care. Additionally, he has consistently uplifted the importance of culturally competent care, particularly for communities that continue to face barriers and stigmas around LGBTQ status, let alone HIV/AIDS status. And through it all, across decades of change, the one constant I am told again and again is Dr. Kent's humanity. His patients trusted him. His colleagues relied on him. And generations of medical professionals have learned from him and by watching his example. Dr. Kent, your legacy is written, not just in the systems you helped shape or the policies you advanced, but the literal thousands of lives you touched, the families you supported, and the futures you helped make possible. On behalf of Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors and a deeply, deeply grateful broad community, thank you for your service, your leadership, your courage, and your compassion. We all wish you great joy, good health, and fulfillment in this next chapter. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Kent. And I'll ask my colleagues to come join us for the photo. And really, thank you. Let me grab the actual. It's for you. We'll hop in the middle. Of course.
I am so touched and honored by this and by this recognition. Thank you so much. I'm a doctor. I do what I do. But, you know, starting my career at the height of the HIV epidemic was definitely a very powerful beginning to my career here in Santa Clara County. I feel, as to echo what everyone else has said, I feel very fortunate and very proud to live in this county, to have the support from our administration, our staff, to work with some of the best clinicians I've ever met in Santa Clara Valley Healthcare System. And just to have the support of this administration, particularly currently with the difficulties that we're facing with the federal administration. I'm very gratified that we have support and advocacy for all of us in this community. And, you know, we'll do our best to overcome, hopefully, just these temporary setbacks that we have. I'm also humbled to share the agenda with such amazing people who have contributed so much to this community. So I thank you all very much for the recognition. And I'm not going away. I want to continue to help our community, do what I can to support us. But again, thank you all for your support and your recognition. It means a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next, moving on the agenda, we have. Yes, it's yours. Yep, the commendation for Palo Alto Fire Chief Gio Blackshire, honoring his retirement from Palo Alto Fire Department after 28 years of service from Supervisor Abicoga.
Thank you. Thank you, President. Hello again, everyone. It's rather, again, bittersweet as we're losing quite a bit of leadership, incredible leadership in the fire service in District 5 as we recognized Chief Diaz earlier. We are now recognizing another outstanding fire chief, and that is Palo Alto Fire Chief Gio Blackshire. And I want to wish you a happy retirement. To share a little bit about Chief Blackshire, who I've had a chance to know when I started in Mountain View City Council and started hanging out at our firehouses. I kept hearing Gio's name quite a bit. And I soon learned why. Just he has such a great reputation for his incredible compassion, dedication, and commitment to the fire service. And he joined the Palo Alto Fire Department in 1998. And in 2019, he was entrusted with the responsibility of leading the department as fire chief. Shortly after assuming his new position, the COVID-19 pandemic began and put Chief Blackshire's leadership to the test. Chief Blackshire's calm and collected presence guided the department through those grueling, uncertain days, as we could all remember. All great leaders know this. Leading with steadiness sets example for how your team reacts to crises and challenges. And what's most admirable about Chief Blackshire is his humility. He's quick to redirect credit. He reminds us that while leadership sets the course, it's the firefighters who carry out the mission. He always uplifts his administrative team and the firefighters who rushed into their firefighter ambulances, transporting patients when so little was known about the coronavirus and who never wavered despite budget cuts and constant change. Under Chief Blackshire's six years of service as fire chief, the department achieved remarkable milestones. He oversaw the construction and rebuilding of two fire stations in Palo Alto, ensuring that public safety infrastructure keeps up with the growing needs of Palo Alto. In a snapshot of 2022, he welcomed 13 new firefighters into the department, making sure staffing was keeping up with the demands of the city as well. That year, call volume rose by an incredible 16%, with the department responding to 8,334 calls for service. That same year, the Palo Alto Fire Department achieved a 36% ROSC rating, R-O-S-C, well above the state average of 25%. And what is ROSC? ROSC is a rating that measures the lives saved after cardiac arrest. Also, under Chief Blackshire, the fire department's mobile vaccination team partnered with Santa Clara County, I see some nodding heads, to provide lifesaving COVID shots for 95 residents who could not reach the clinics. Under his leadership, the city of Palo Alto also oversaw all aspects of managing a potentially disastrous diesel fuel spill into the Matadaro Creek from the Veterans Affairs site in 2021. This was the largest hazardous material spill the city had ever managed. For more than a year, the fire department's hazmat team worked cohesively with a large number of bodies, including State Fish and Wildlife, the Regional Water Board, the City of Palo Alto's Stormwater Staff, Valley Water, and the remediation specialists. These are stories of lives saved, families kept together, and a community that is well-cared for. Through it all, he's remained a man who expresses gratitude and reflects humility through all of his accomplishments. Chief Blackshire, thank you so much for your extraordinary service. And thank you for elevating the standards of service in the Palo Alto Fire Department. But I thank overall for the entire fire service. And I just want to congratulate you on your retirement. I know that I wish you well in your next adventures. And please know that your tenure has really left an indelible mark in our community. And I hope to see you around in the community, even in your retirement. So thank you. If you'd like to say a few words, I'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Abicoga for this recognition, as well as Supervisor Williams and staff. I humbly am grateful for this recognition. Serving in Palo Alto and Stanford for 28 years, seven as fire chief, has been an incredible experience, especially in the county. Over my 28-year tenure, I've responded in one way, shape, or form to every city and district in the county and beyond. And that just shows the importance of collaboration in this county and how important it is that we have that support outside our boundaries. But I really, of all that I've done, whether it's firefighter safety and pushing through COVID and other hazards, I really put a lot of emphasis on hiring and diversifying in the fire service. I was on the International Association of Fire Chiefs Human Relations Committee, specifically to find ways to collaborate with partners around the country on how we can diversify the fire service and particularly increase women in the fire service because there's such a deficit. And it's so important for me to pursue that because if you look around, even in this room or in the county, the diversity matters. Making sure that we serve people that look like us matters. And it's a better service for all, and it's a better way to serve. Being the first black fire chief in Palo Alto is quite the challenge, but I think it's important just to show that that there are opportunities out there for everyone if you just work hard, but also have the support and support those and show what you see in others. And so through that effort, we've been one of the highest fire departments in the regions that had a percentage of women in the fire service, and I'm so, so proud of that. And I'm proud of Tammy Jasso, our first woman fire marshal in Palo Alto, who's here to support me. So thank you for being here. That being said, I won't take too much time. But being a fire chief is an honor. Being a firefighter alone is an honor. But being a fire chief is really, really special. And it's been an honor and a privilege to serve Palo Alto, Stanford, and this whole county. Thank you so much for this recognition. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
If everyone can join us.
All right, next, we have a commendation from our county executive for Grace Rodriguez, as she retires after 35 years of service to Santa Clara County.
Well, it's my privilege, on behalf of the board and the entire county organization, to congratulate Grace Rodriguez, who is retiring after 35 years of outstanding service to the county of Santa Clara. Grace's contributions have played a crucial role in the effective functioning of local government accounting practices in supporting the county's critical Public Safety 911 communication services. Grace has helped shape the fiscal operations for the County Communications Department through budget preparation, financial reports, cost allocation plans, federal and state grant reimbursements, and implementation of methodologies that promote fiscal responsibility and cost recovery. Grace began her county career in July of 1990 as an account clerk I in the Controller-Treasurer Department, where her hard work and dedication quickly made a significant impact on fiscal matters. She later transferred to County Communications and in 2001 was promoted to Senior Accountant, where her expertise greatly enhanced fiscal accountability and financial management. At CountyCom, Grace has been the driving force behind providing efficient, effective, quality service, demonstrating
I want to thank my own family, Stephanie, Nanita, Matthew, Derek, and my husband Floriano for their love and support. Thank you.
I invite the board to come over here, and would you like one of your family to come up for a photo? Yeah, coming up. And here's your—
Thank you so much for your service.
And your commendation. If the staff from Valley Health Plan could come and join me. Let's give a round of applause for Valley Health Plan. So, before I present on behalf of the board and our county organization this commendation, recognizing Valley Health Plan on its 40th anniversary service to our community, I actually just want to pause for a second and acknowledge that we recently lost one member of VHP's executive team in a horrific homicide just recently. David Hurst, who is our chief business development officer for VHP. And I know that's been a huge loss for our entire VHP team and family, and if we could just take a quick moment of silence in remembrance of him. Thank you. I wanted to start by recognizing that because, of course, it's the people who make our organization so extraordinary, and each individual public servant here within our organization has an important contribution to make. And today, we are celebrating the 40th anniversary of Valley Health Plan, which was founded in 1985 as a licensed health maintenance organization that began just serving a few thousand county employees in its humble beginning. In the 1990s, VHP opened its network to community clinics and physicians, and after the passage of the Affordable Care Act in 2010, joined the Covered California Insurance Exchange. Owned and operated by the county, VHP is the only locally-based commercial health plan in Santa Clara County, and now provides health coverage and access to medical care for more than 229,000 Santa Clara County residents through employer group plans, Covered California, individual and family plans, and a Medi-Cal Managed Care partnership, and the administration of numerous county-sponsored health access initiatives. VHP's expanded its provider network to include not just Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, but also El Camino Sutter and Stanford. It offers telehealth visits in multiple languages and ensures follow-up calls so members never feel left out on their own after a hospital stay. Committed to having a positive and equitable health impact on Santa Clara County residents, VHP partners with over 100 community-based organizations, from food access and housing assistance programs to youth fitness initiatives and multicultural health fairs, to reach families in neighborhoods and in languages where they feel most at home. VHP supports the well-being of its members and community by empowering local and diverse staff, providing assistance in over 150 languages with free translation and interpretation services, and offering free health and wellness programs, fitness classes, and nutritional education. VHP has earned the National Committee for Quality Assurance Health Equity accreditation, and more recently, full NCQA accreditation. We've called upon Valley Health Plan to take on more and more in recent years. They've implemented a number of new systems and initiatives, and we're in the midst of a really significant Medi-Cal Managed Care structural transformation here in Santa Clara County that will help support our county healthcare delivery system and residents more broadly across our community. So today, we commend and celebrate Valley Health Plan for the past 40 years of commitment and dedicated service to high-quality, affordable healthcare for the residents of Santa Clara County, and looking ahead into the future for much more to come in the next years and decades. Thank you to the entire VHP staff, to the leadership and team for the service that you have provided our county organization, our county employees, and most importantly, the many, many residents of Santa Clara County who depend on VHP for access to healthcare.
Thank you so much. As James said, we lost David last over Thanksgiving weekend, and David was actually supposed to be here today. So it's hard. I think what we think about is David shared that mission that we bring to Valley Health Plan every day, which is to care for county employees, their families, those on Covered California, of course, all the very important and vulnerable people on Medi-Cal, and we just continue to work and grow and improve what we do. So thank you so much for being here today, and thank you so much for this commendation. Thank you, James.
The board, come join me. And anybody else from VHP, please come on up. All right, if our employee excellence award recipients could please come join me in the chairs that are being set up to my right and left. So today, we have the honor of recognizing just a handful of our truly outstanding public servants here at the county of Santa Clara, and we're going to hear about employees from the county executive's office, procurement department, district attorney's office, sheriff's office, probation department, social services agency, Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, and the behavioral health services department. So the way this works is I will call you up one at a time, read a lovely blurb about you that was provided by your department. You'll then take a step back, and President Lee will hand you your certificate, take a photo with him, and then at the end, we'll do a group photo all together. Sound good? All right. Please feel free to cheer. So we begin with Doug Feliciano. All right. So Doug manages and oversees facilities security for the county of Santa Clara, divisioned within the office of the county executive. Over a seven-year tenure, Doug has built the facility's security team from the ground up and has been at the helm of its success. Some of Doug's responsibilities include designing physical security plans for construction projects, providing countywide workplace violence prevention training, liaising with law enforcement to prevent and investigate crime, mitigating incoming threats, and providing protection for our elected officials and staff. Doug is unwavering in his commitment to keeping county employees, facilities, and residents safe. His attention to detail, strong managerial knowledge, and acumen of security issues, and his tireless work ethic are exemplary. Doug's approachability and responsiveness with all levels of county staff—from board members to frontline staff—is second to none. He brings a critical eye and listening ear to achieving workable, practical, physical improvements. Doug consistently receives compliments from staff who attend his safety trainings. 2025 had highly visible security issues with the rollout of metal detectors for board chambers, increased public participation around politically sensitive issues, and heightened local concern due to national security climate becoming more heated. Doug is strategic, realistic, and compassionate in engaging in dialogue around concerns and in addressing them. He always goes above and beyond, and he is always there when you call for his help. Thank you, Doug, for your excellent work and that of your entire team. I appreciate how proactive and responsive you are, day in, day out, and very grateful to security trainings that you have provided our staff, but also to me, to our board members, and other folks who interact with the public on a daily basis. Thank you for all the service that you've provided. Procurement contract specialist, Ben Reyes consistently delivers exceptional and reliable support to both internal departments and the broader community. Among his standout contributions is the countywide implementation of the vendor solicitation platform, Bedingo. Ben successfully led a team of 27 department and vendor personnel to replace the legacy solicitation platform with Bedingo. He guided the cross-functional team through the rapid implementation within a strict two-month timeframe, effectively managing all facets of the project. Bedingo was launched with minimal disruption to county solicitations. Recently, Ben has taken on the project manager role for the county's migration of contracting activities to AREBA. He oversees six work streams in a team of over 50 professionals and subject matter experts. He's responsible for managing resources, communication, and deliverables to ensure a successful implementation that enhances the county's reporting, compliance, and contract management. His contributions directly support the county's ability to serve residents efficiently and equitably, particularly through his leadership in countywide procurement efforts, contract development, and cost-saving initiatives. Thank you for your service. Shauna Hernandez. Shauna Hernandez, a criminal investigator II and team leader in the District Attorney's Office Bureau of Investigation, consistently displays exceptional leadership, integrity, and initiative in her role with the trial preparation division. A former deputy with the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office, Shauna brought a strong foundation of ethical decision-making, professionalism, and collaboration that continues to set the standard for others to follow. Shauna is known for her team mindset and is always ready to help others and address challenges with fairness and objectivity. Her collaborative and solutions-oriented approach has created a productive and supportive environment for those she leads. Over the years, Shauna has handled numerous assignments that have strengthened the bureau's operations and enhanced coordination across teams to deliver exceptional service. Recently, she improved the court notification process for witnesses and victims, ensuring documents and information are sent promptly and accurately. Her keen attention to detail and dedication to efficiency have boosted coordination and service delivery within the district attorney's office and with community members. Shauna's leadership and considerate approach have gained the respect of her colleagues and those she supervises. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Matthew Fraser. This summer, Deputy Matthew Fraser played a key role in preventing dangerous drugs from getting inside the Elmwood Correctional Complex and harming the incarcerated population. Through the strong rapport he built with those in custody, Deputy Fraser received credible information about a newly housed person who had a significant amount of fentanyl. Acting swiftly, Deputy Fraser launched an investigation that uncovered a bag filled with a large amount of the drug, enough to pose a serious risk to incarcerated individuals, medical staff, and correctional personnel. Deputy Fraser reviewed hours of surveillance footage to track the individual's movements from arrival to discovery, confirming that the contraband had not been distributed. Thanks to Deputy Fraser's diligence, the fentanyl was confiscated just hours after the person arrived at the facility. Had it gone undetected, it could have led to medical emergencies and overdose incidents. Deputy Fraser's proactive approach, attention to detail, and commitment to safety reflect the highest standards of the sheriff's office and directly contributed to maintaining a secure and safe environment for all. Well done and congratulations. Jason Flores. Jason serves as a senior deputy probation officer assigned to a high-risk offender unit in adult probation. In addition to managing a caseload, he has taken on the role of the AB 109 court officer. In this capacity, Jason collaborates closely with justice partners. His expertise has been instrumental in streamlining AB 109 proceedings. Jason plays a pivotal role in accurately and effectively conveying supervision officers' reports. Highly respected by courtroom staff, Jason has adapted seamlessly to frequent changes in courtroom operations. Jason consistently demonstrates an exceptional work ethic. Whether interacting with clients, court personnel, colleagues, or collaborative partners, he communicates with respect, clarity, and empathy. His approachable and solution-focused demeanor has made him a valuable resource across the department. Jason is always willing to train fellow staff members and serve as a mentor. Despite his substantial responsibilities, Jason also serves as a field training officer. He trains and mentors new staff in core competencies, emphasizing communication, client engagement, and officer safety in field supervision. As a field partner, Jason is widely regarded as a dependable and knowledgeable mentor. We appreciate all that you do. Congratulations. Stephen Fisher. As a management analyst in the Veteran Service Office, Stephen Fisher consistently exemplifies the highest standards of public service, leadership, and integrity. Stephen's data-driven insights have led to significant improvements in service delivery and operational efficiency. His work behind the scenes ensures that our programs remain responsive, effective, and aligned with the needs of our local veteran community. What truly distinguishes Stephen is his willingness to step outside his formal role. During staffing shortages, he has voluntarily taken on frontline duties management. His contributions directly support the county's ability to serve residents efficiently and equitably, particularly through his leadership in countywide procurement efforts, contract development, and cost-saving initiatives. Thank you for your service. Shauna Hernandez, a criminal investigator two and team leader in the district attorney's office Bureau of Investigation, consistently displays exceptional leadership, integrity, and initiative in her role with the trial preparation division. A former deputy with the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office, Shauna brought a strong foundation of ethical decision-making, professionalism, and collaboration that continues to set the standard for others to follow. Shauna is known for her team mindset and is always ready to help others and address challenges with fairness and objectivity. Her collaborative and solutions-oriented approach has created a productive and supportive environment for those she leads. Over the years, Shauna has handled numerous assignments that have strengthened the bureau's operations and enhanced coordination across teams to deliver exceptional service. Recently, she improved the court notification process for witnesses and victims, ensuring documents and information are sent promptly and accurately. Her keen attention to detail and dedication to efficiency have boosted coordination and service delivery within the district attorney's office and with community members. Shauna's leadership and considerate approach have gained the respect of her colleagues and those she supervises. Congratulations. This summer, Deputy Matthew Fraser played a key role in preventing dangerous drugs from getting inside the Elmwood Correctional Complex and harming the incarcerated population. Through the strong rapport he built with those in custody, Deputy Fraser received credible information about a newly housed person who had a significant amount of fentanyl. Acting swiftly, Deputy Fraser launched an investigation that uncovered a bag filled with a large amount of the drug, enough to pose a serious risk to incarcerated individuals, medical staff, and correctional personnel. Deputy Fraser reviewed hours of surveillance footage to track the individual's movements from arrival to discovery, confirming that the contraband had not been distributed. Thanks to Deputy Fraser's diligence, the fentanyl was confiscated just hours after the person arrived at the facility. Had it gone undetected, it could have led to medical emergencies and overdose incidents. Deputy Fraser's proactive approach, attention to detail, and commitment to safety reflect the highest standards of the sheriff's office and directly contributed to maintaining a secure and safe environment for all. Well done and congratulations. Jason serves as a senior deputy probation officer assigned to a high-risk offender unit in adult probation. In addition to managing a caseload, he has taken on the role of the AB 109 court officer. In this capacity, Jason collaborates closely with justice partners. His expertise has been instrumental in streamlining AB 109 proceedings. Jason plays a pivotal role in accurately and effectively conveying supervision officers' reports. Highly respected by courtroom staff, Jason has adapted seamlessly to frequent changes in courtroom operations. Jason consistently demonstrates an exceptional work ethic. Whether interacting with clients, court personnel, colleagues, or collaborative partners, he communicates with respect, clarity, and empathy. His approachable and solution-focused demeanor has made him a valuable resource across the department. Jason is always willing to train fellow staff members and serve as a mentor. Despite his substantial responsibilities, Jason also serves as a field training officer. He trains and mentors new staff in core competencies, emphasizing communication, client engagement, and officer safety in field supervision. As a field partner, Jason is widely regarded as a dependable and knowledgeable mentor. We appreciate all that you do. As a management analyst in the Veteran Service Office, Stephen Fisher consistently exemplifies the highest standards of public service, leadership, and integrity. Stephen's data-driven insights have led to significant improvements in service delivery and operational efficiency. His work behind the scenes ensures that our programs remain responsive, effective, and aligned with the needs of our local veteran community. What truly distinguishes Stephen is his willingness to step outside his formal role. During staffing shortages, he has voluntarily taken on frontline duties, including virtual walk-ins and phone support, ensuring no veteran is left without assistance. His actions reflect a deep commitment to service and teamwork. Stephen also leads key initiatives such as the Staff Sergeant Fox Suicide Prevention and MHSA programs, authoring grants and ensuring compliance. His leadership in modernizing VSO systems, including the launch of a new scheduling tool and online registration for Stand Down, demonstrates innovation and foresight. Stephen is dedicated to improving the lives of veterans and their families, both through his analytical work and his hands-on support, setting him apart as a role model for others. Thank you for your service to our community and specifically to our veterans. Dr. Ryan Holleyder. Dr. Ryan Holleyder has been a valuable medical staff member at Regional Medical Center predating the county's purchase of RMC. It was clear from the first day after the county assumed ownership of RMC that Dr. Holleyder was a true gem. He's respected by the Interventional Radiology staff as well as by his physician peers because he exemplifies being a team player and an excellent clinician. Dr. Holleyder always puts the patient first and pitches in to help whenever needed. He's always available to his colleagues and is willing to see any patient to offer an opinion or advice to his colleagues. Because of his experience and skill, he can take on the most challenging cases and support his colleagues in their most challenging cases as well. Beginning in April 2025, RMC had limited staffing in Interventional Radiology while awaiting the onboarding of new hires. Dr. Holleyder took all the unfilled call days during a several-month period to ensure that patients always had services available to them. This selfless act truly embodies the spirit of Santa Clara Valley Healthcare. Thank you for your dedication to RMC and to our entire community. Rehabilitation counselor Ruben Marquez's commitment to work in the field of addiction began over 15 years ago when he witnessed a person carrying a simple message: Change is possible. That experience led him to establish himself in a recovery environment and pursue his education in substance use disorder treatment. Ruben strongly believes in serving the community and helping people see and feel that there are others available to help without judgment, those with lived experience who can provide a sense of direction as well as moments of understanding of what that individual is going through. Ruben advocates for his clients and prioritizes being available to them, adding more group sessions in response to asking what services they would like to receive. He builds strong relationships with other healthcare partners, improving the healthcare outcomes of his clients, and encourages his peers mentoring colleagues as they pursue higher education and certification in alcohol and drug counseling. He believes that every engagement with a patient or staff is an opportunity to promote a brighter future ahead. Thank you for your dedication to helping others. All right, let's have a huge round of applause for all of our excellence award recipients. And I invite the board to come join me. We're going to turn our backs and take a group photo.
Congratulations. We're going to leave this now. Congratulations. Congratulations. Hold on.
Do you guys want to step up just one step?
Now we go to item number 10, which is adjourning to our Board of Supervisors meeting on to Tuesday, tomorrow, December 9th at 9:30 right here. Thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations.